We are, we are recording for the audience and for, it'll be uploaded after the event. We've had to stop loading things live because people gaslight everything I put online. So we're trying to cut down on that and try to keep a peaceful town. So that's why we're doing it this way. (pause) We do have a quorum. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And the audience will not be allowed to speak in meetings you're not a part of the agenda and you can't speak. I appreciate everybody being here tonight, showing interest in what is going on in your town. If you grew up here in town and if you live in one of those villages, we still appreciate your presence in our boardroom. You're always welcome. Let me call this meeting to order. Special call, meeting of the mayor and board of aldermen of Calvin City, Mississippi, at seven P.M. Please put your phones on mute. October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, at seven P.M., seven P.M. Calls to order, invitation and pledge of allegiance by his Stephanie Lucius.
Please bow. Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight and before you with grateful hearts for the gift of our beautiful town and the opportunity together today. We thank, I thank you for these other leaders of our town who serve us and the citizens who are engaged in making our town a better place. We ask you to grant us wisdom and to, to the elected officials and the staff. As we deliberate on the issues we face, please give us clarity and a commitment to justice and coming good. The Lord would just ask for your guidance to lead, guard, guide, and protect us in all that we do. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all the women. Adoption, item number two, adoption of the agenda before you. Danny Brown, before we get a motion and a second, a little bit of a discussion on item number three. We're gonna table it. So when we approve the agenda, I'm gonna ask for item number three to be tabled until we reduce the business down lower and then remind me to come back to item number three. Because we may have to add a name there, depending on what the board does tonight. Need a motion to approve the agenda before you.
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda?
Need a second.
Second.
Then motion properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you to sign and a, motion carries unanimously. Item number, number three, need a motion to table.
Make a motion that we table item number three.
You just come back, need a second.
Second.
Then motion properly, take, properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you to sign and a, motion carries unanimously. Alderman, Ald- Alderman Super, Alderman, um, Super, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, did you, did you vote? Did you vote?
Yes.
You voted yes, okay. Item number four, discussion and action on possibly purchasing a tractor. See these three beds, drop the call, feel called back. Two beds attached, included. These are, this is a tractor that we need, our tractor's in bad shape. And we have like three beds. Mr. Dan, pick one of these, the lowest bed. You look at them, go back and look at them again. Make sure everything is included. I see those frames have a total of seventy-six thousand dollars on the bed. Comfortable bed of a loader and a bush-haul, back wing and a tractor. Seventy-five, seventy-five horse?
Mm-hmm, seventy-five.
All of them seventy-five.
Yes, sir.
So, Chickasaw equipment has, you got, check us all equipment. Has a bed, uh, total of... Seven, seven. Seventy-seven thousand three hundred ninety dollars and five cents. Okay, and John Deere has a total of sixty-six thousand six sixty-one thirty. I see something missing at the bottom, is that everything? Is that it, Mr. Dan, that's what I'm looking at?
Yes.
Sixty-six thousand, which is the lowest bed. That money will be coming out of our use tax, money that we can use to buy equipment. That's what I mentioned in the budget here, we didn't budget for it, but, um, but we had money to buy equipment, if y'all remember. That we would be coming back looking at some equipment that'll be a building, which, you know, we just have to not pay it with the vision. Need a motion, moving forward one way or the other, the lowest bid is John Deere.
John Deere.
So you need a motion to go with the John Deere or you just need a motion to purge?
Yes, the lowest bid, uh, yes, John Deere.
Well, I make a motion if we go with the...
We're gonna do discussion and test again.
Oh, okay.
Not go in.
Oh, okay. I make a motion if we go with the, uh, lowest bid, which has been provided by the John Deere company.
Okay, uh, get a second.
Second.
Your motion is second, any discussion?
Is the John Deere the one, one we want?
Yes. We could put eyes on it. I think the one that's up in Houston, Chickasaw, which was seventy-six thousand, we, I mean...
What with Holland?
Yeah, we, we didn't see it, but we saw the tour of beds. The other ones said they could order. John Deere can get it for us pretty quick.
Do we have one breakdown or are we replacing all of them?
You know, we, we have a lot of breakdowns and we, we keep the nose running, but, um, we need a tractor. We need one that's dependable, um, that we can run all the time. They work on the ones that we have all the time. Sometimes we can't bush-haul because our tractors are down. People don't understand it, they just know that the grass is high. And that they voted us in here to, to get it cut, so...
Uh, the John Deere tractor, will they be able to do maintenance on it?
No, they have to go back to John Deere. There was a problem with the other tractor, you know, uh, in the past, they wouldn't take them back to the dealerships and so then when they, when they worked on them so long, the dealership won't take them anymore. Everything we purchased since I've been the mayor goes back to the dealership.
Got you.
There's been motion second, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have one, aye. Aye, aye, aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously, no negative votes, let the record show, so moved and so ordered. Discussion fine, is an incident report, if you're fine, um, for five thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars seventy-one cent. Normally, under emergency situations, I would have already wanted to get and pay that during an accident because I can approve up to five thousand dollars on emergency. Discussion and action on Delta fire reimbursement of five thousand six hundred fifty-five dollars seventy-one cent. Where we had, was putting in a covert and the guy that was on the tractor, was focused on the project and the, um, the backhoe on the back just touched the air conditioning that was hanging on the wall and, um, put a dent in it, put it, the damage that, that covert. And so the freon kept running out, they had to put a new unit in. They hadn't put it in yet, they waited on approval. And if you'll take the time, if you haven't, and read what they said on the front and the back and then our incident report follows. Mr. Torres, if you're gonna read that for us on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five.
Dear Mayor Coleman, on October ninth, twenty-twenty-five, at approximately nine thirty-two A.M., I notified the city office that city employee Karen Novles had inadvertently damaged our HVAC system while operating machinery during the covert replacement project. This incident was witnessed by both our staff and another city employee who was present at the site. The following day, on October tenth, our employee Chuck spoke directly with Mr. Novles and made him aware of the damage as Mr. Novles continued his work on site. After waiting several days without receiving an incident report or any follow-up, follow-up communication from the city, I contacted your office directly to ensure the matter was properly addressed and to request guidance on the expense. As discussed during our telephone conversation, I am attached to estimate for the replacement cost of the HVAC system. Please let us know the anticipated timeline for reimbursement so we can promptly restore climate control to our building. Respectfully yours, Ms. Karen Harden Nester, owner.
That incident report didn't reach me until a few days... That incident report didn't reach city hall until a few days later because the guys were busy, but it was written up and it's right there behind that explanation there that the incident did occur and so we accept the liability. Uh, ran in the board with, um, with vote to pay the bill. Need a motion.
I guess, I guess Jenkins is who he wanted to fix it.
That, that's who they, um, that's who put it in, originally on the floor there.
Make motion, pay repair.
We received a motion, second. Then motion, uh, properly second. Any further discussion, if not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you to sign and a, motion carries unanimously, no negative votes. Item number six, a discussion and action on Delta fire contract of twenty-six thousand dollars, which is a contract to, um, to pay out the contract for a fire department that had a contract going for a fire truck to be built through Delta Fire. You already aware of it, we talked about it the last time. Attorney said they had agreed, um, on the twenty-six thousand, nothing else to follow. So he wanted us to go ahead and pay that. We'll pull those funds out of the fire truck, um, budget that we set up close to eight thou- eight hundred thousand dollars this time. So, seven hundred ninety-six thousand dollars to be exact. Need a motion.
How, how much are we saving right there?
Say, you know, a little bit over a hundred thousand.
Going with another truck.
Right, mm-hmm. And plus, we couldn't get the truck, remember? They, we would have got the truck two or three years later. And they, they had us a truck sometime, they would have had it the first of the year, but hopefully by March, we go ahead and approve, um, getting out of this contract. Then we get in another contract with the other vendor.
And Paul Moore was given this.
He dealt strictly with this.
I'll make a motion, pay, pay.
Need a second. Then motion, then motion properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you to sign and a, motion carries unanimously, no negative votes. Item number seven is discussion and action on city clerk and sit and pay. Item number seven is discussion and action on hiring a water clerk. And item number nine is discussion and action on raising pay part-time for part-time worker to stay on the run a day for fifteen dollars an hour. Do we wanna go into executive session or y'all ready to deal with what we have before? If there's any questions, we can, if we're gonna talk about anything on personnel standpoint, then we need to go into executive session. If not, I hope we can stay out here and not have to have all these folks go out and...
On no, on number seven, I just, I mean, I'd like to make a motion to advertise the city clerk job in the paper.
Okay, um... She made a motion. To advertise, then motion properly second, all in favor, say, any discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor, this is what we did anyway, when something like this comes up, we automatically run it in the paper for two weeks, right?
We don't, remember what I said the last time?
Yes.
Uh, what we normally do, from a traditional standpoint, we did it for... Everybody that's been in the office that was already there, we offered them to be able to move up. I know we dealt with this the last time and we discussed it and so we knew, but you, you know, um, Alderman wants, he wants it to run in the paper. We ran it in the paper, we got sta- a stack of applications that tall. We're running it again. It don't matter for me, I told you on the phone, I run it again. Uh, I, we know what we do.
We've got applications since nearly...
We, yeah, man, we, we get applications every day. People know there's jobs opening around here, we don't have to advertise. You got somebody in particular, tell them...
I'd like to see some of the applications.
Yes.
You'd like to see them, yep, and, and...
I mean, we're responsible for hiring a person, so I'd like to see them.
You are, you gonna see that, any application. This is what I want you to know. You can ask for anything you want. Then if the board agrees, then I, I mean, I'm gonna give it to you. But things like an application, then they come to you anyway, so I don't know why you asking for it. Every time we bring a person back here, we give you the app- application. Now, if this what you asking me?
But you said you've had several attorney ads since, you know, I haven't seen one of them.
Yeah, you ain't supposed to see them until we battle them.
Okay.
So, you know, who is out there?
Or who's gonna battle?
You battle them when we bring them back here. I mean, if you wanna change everything we've been doing, then I'm open for that too. I'm not gonna continue to come back here and debate the way we do business and you trying to change it every time. You tell me, yes you are because you not, you not, you don't know how we been doing business, so now you got a new way of doing business and I don't mind it. You are, hey, we don't need anybody talking and the, ma'am, can you put your phone up, please? So we need to be quiet in the room, we trying to conduct business. So Alderman, all I'm saying to you is that that's not the way we been doing it. That don't mean we have to keep doing it that way, I understand. But the board has got to be in agreement. Y'all wanna change all their presidents, then change it. If you wanna come in here and interview folks, then you doing my job. But if that's what you want, do it. I told you that the last time. Is that what you, you got time to do that?
Yep.
Well, do it.
I did.
You tell them, you can do it, I'm not gonna try to stop you.
You can come out there in the morning, pick up some reservations, gotten them the past two weeks?
You can't leave here with them.
Okay.
They got personally identifying information.
I understand, I understand.
I don't mind you looking at any application because they not here.
Okay.
So, you know, you have no acts, why would you wait till the board meet and ask?
You know, if I see somebody that looks good, I'd talk to you about it and get your thoughts on it and try to work with you.
Okay, that's what we need to do.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying I'm gonna pick the person, I mean, you, you have to be greatly involved in it.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that, I know I'm supposed to be. But I'm not gonna keep coming up there fighting with you about how things work around here in city hall. Listen to me, I'm not trying to fight with you tonight.
I just asked.
Yeah, I'm not trying to fight with you tonight, but every time we come in the boardroom, there's something that holds up progress like this and we could be finished.
It's, it's just in a...
We got, we got a motion here. Did you make a motion?
Uh, I made a motion that we advertise the job in the paper.
Okay, there's been motion, need a second.
I'll get a second.
Okay, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, you got three, so, so, motion carries three with two. And so to show you I'm trying to work with, I know it's not, motion carries three with two. I showed you, since you've been here, I've been trying to work with, so I'm gonna do it this way. I'm gonna tell you I'm not gonna veto it. I don't agree with it, but I won't veto it.
You don't agree with advertising?
No, because we've already done it. But that neither here nor there is, Lucius, we've already done that. We've advertised, we already advertised. We advertised, we advertised back here two weeks ago, back here about a month or so ago when other employees were gone.
But not for the city clerk job?
No, because we don't do it that way. We didn't do it when Miss Dilly came, when Miss Dilly... Hey, I'm gonna ask y'all one more time, if another outbreak is in here, then I'm gonna ask that person to be escorted out, because there's nothing funny in the boardroom. We conducting business in here, can we not be serious? Or we gonna laugh and joke about it? Now, what were we saying?
Advertising the paper three to, I guess, did y'all...
Three to. And so was it funny because I said I wouldn't veto it? Because I have that, I have that, that's what the legislature gives to me.
I couldn't imagine why you want to veto it.
Well, I'm just saying because it's holding up progress. And what you gonna do is create more and more problems and you'll watch, I won't do what you did. I won't say what the problem is gonna be, you'll find out what it is. So everything is fine, you do it. And do it, item number eight, discussion and action on hiring a water court clerk. See one after the application where you can look at it. We do have somebody to present for water court clerk tonight. All the applications is already in here. Look out Joel in the morning, Alderman, look out him in the morning and get that in advertising.
Can you tell me what you know about her?
You just talked her... You just, her application, I said her application, speak for itself. That's what we go on everybody, we don't know everybody, people fill out application, we interview them, and we go from there. We have a plan to suggest them, I can tell you that.
Are, are we in a rush to hire a water support clerk right now?
We ain't in a rush to do anything, there's nobody at City Hall can do anything but one individual, that's it. The rest doesn't answer the telephone. Well, I mean, it's just only, uh. It's the only one with the qualifications, yes, sir. You can't, I don't know how hard it is to understand, um, we just can't hire anybody, we don't just push. Somebody that don't have the proper education to be in those positions, that's what happened in the past. We put folks in that, and they would say, I'm not gonna do this, and I'm not gonna do that, and they never drew. We trying to hire people now that have skill set already, and, and been shown that they'll, they'll stick to the curriculum. So we have somebody that, that has three or four degrees, um, and everybody in here should know them. I don't know what you looking for, I don't know what we could be looking for in the newspaper, because everybody that. Just about want a job like this, already has it, it qualifies for it, so when, you gonna be limited, you're going to be limited on people, and you didn't count them too.
Oh, you've been looking for a court clerk for a month now, so.
What you mean?
We've been, I mean, John, for a month, that's.
Nobody else, I healed up, because it wasn't a rush to judgment, we been without that since.
Two months.
Listen, we been without that, I got all this in my head, I know you don't, I said two months, you said two months. So I'm saying, we been without a court clerk since when?
Well, somebody's been filling in for it.
Since July, no, since July when, July the fourth, July the fourth. So I wasn't trying to be smart either, I, I do know what I'm doing.
So when Michael, Michael left, somebody's been, somebody's been filling in for him for the last year.
He been making do the work today. But see, you oughta know what happened, you sit in the boardroom.
Look, I don't, I don't, I don't know that person, Ms. Lucius.
I didn't know her well, and, um, I think she's very capable, and I've taught her, she was one of my cheerleaders for years, and I've worked with her. Cause she paid me as an assistant.
She did it.
And, um. Never had a little problem. So I think she would be responsible.
John Brayton, hold your off.
I make a motion we hire her.
In motion, need a second?
Second.
In motion properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you can assign a name, motion carries unanimously, no negative vote. Um, discussion and action on raising pay for part-time worker Miss Delma Vando for fifteen dollars, because she is valuable while we in this transition period. And she, she holds office down when we go to MML, and, uh, she's retired, and, um, fifteen dollars an hour is counted. Um, low, for a caliber worker.
Where is she now?
She worked.
Are you ready?
Ten ninety-one, it's ten ninety-one, I think.
Ten ninety-one, mhm. I need a motion.
Make a motion.
Make a motion, probably second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you can assign a name, motion carries unanimously, no negative vote. Go back to item number three. Discussion and action on voting on the signature card at Lunters Aunt Bank, the removal of, uh, Deborah Bailey, Nellie Pratt, Diana Nick Torrey, uh, Hubbard. And to keep Mayor Coleman and Alderman Larry Bratton on all counts at Lunters Aunt Bank, need a motion.
Make a motion.
There's been motion, need a second?
Second.
Then motion properly second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you can assign a name, motion carries unanimously, no negative votes, so moved and so ordered. Item number ten. No action, need a motion, no action on executive session.
What's that, you threw it out on there, I've never seen that before.
Yeah, cause I'm gonna make sure that everything is out there, that's why it's on there. And everything that's been questioned, we gonna make sure that, you know, we doing our job in here, so that's why it's on there. Everything we can go into executive session for, so it's right there for you every time you come in here, and you don't have to ask, so. Need a motion, item number ten, no action, on executive session.
You make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion that we do no action on item number ten.
Okay, no action on executive session, please.
Executive session.
Mhm, um, need a second?
Second.
There's been motion properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Poses you can assign a name, motion carries unanimously, no negative vote, um, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Need a second?
Second.
The motion and properly second, adjourn, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Adjourn.
My grandson plays for somebody. Michael, number fifty-one, what was you at?
Michael Warner Jr.
Yeah, my grandson is number fifty-one, Michael Warner Jr.